I would like to call the September 3rd, 2024, City Council meeting for the city of Lake City to order if everyone understands the pledging of leaders for a nice standing for the administration.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Lake City Council has led this public debate since 1968. This city council has forgiven any person who takes personal, pertinent, or inflammatory statements while addressing the city council. Yelling or making audible comments from the audience constitute诽谤. Such conduct must be tolerated. It is only one approved manner of addressing the city council that should be recognized and spoken in public, as reminded persons to not openly carry an handgun or carry a concealed weapon to the farm while they command. Government bodies may be favored by these rules, but decorum of the government will remove them from the meeting. Okay, the first item is approval of the agenda, and I've been asked to remove items 13 and 14 from the current agenda. And, uh, Ms. Young.
Did you want to make an amendment?
That's for the RCC's? Oh, yes, just yes. Um, if we can, um, Mayor, if we can add RCC chair champions funding, um, and the reason being, they didn't turn in their information, they emailed it on the 23rd, August 23rd, and it evidently wasn't oversight. So, we didn't address it tonight. They did what they were asked.
And, uh, Mr. Carter, we have to have a motion, vote on that?
Correct. To add something to the agenda, it takes a unanimous vote of the council to do that.
So, Ms. Young has a motion?
Yes, sir.
Is it second?
Sir.
Any discussion? Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Jordan again?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mayor Witt?
Yes.
City manager Rosenfeld?
Yes.
City attorney Martin?
Present.
Chief Butler?
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Lake City Council has led this public debate since 1968. This city council has forgiven any person who takes personal, pertinent, or pertinent or pertinent statements while addressing the city council. Yelling or making audible comments from the audience constitute诽谤. Such conduct must be tolerated. It is only one approved manner of addressing the city council that should be recognized and spoken in public, as reminded persons to not openly carry an handgun or carry a concealed weapon to the farm while they command. Government bodies may be favored by these rules, but decorum of the government will remove them from the meeting. Okay, the first item is approval of the agenda, and I've been asked to remove items 13 and 14 from the current agenda. And, uh, Ms. Young?
Did you want to make an amendment?
That's for the RCC's? Oh, yes, just yes. Um, if we can, um, Mayor, if we can add RCC chair champions funding, um, and the reason being, they didn't turn in their information, they emailed it on the 23rd, August 23rd, and it evidently wasn't oversight. So, we didn't address it tonight. They did what they were asked.
And, uh, Mr. Carter, we have to have a motion, vote on that?
Correct. To add something to the agenda, it takes a unanimous vote of the council to do that.
So, Ms. Young has a motion?
Yes, sir.
Is it second?
Sir.
Any discussion? Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Jordan again?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mayor Witt?
Yes.
Okay, now we put a, uh, kind of, kind of old business agreement to the 14th. Okay.
You don't have?
Okay. All right. So, with, uh, that, uh, amendments to the agenda, there must be approval of the agenda.
So, approve, yes.
Listen, say that. I'll take a sound. Okay. Any other comments? Linda Andrews?
My name is Linda Andrews, 366 Southwest St. John Street, and I'm here to talk about the, um, animal control ordinance. It was passed in 2003. It's 2003-984. Um, you ban poultry and livestock in the city limits. I used to have chickens, and I'd like my chickens back, but I would like to have the amendment, um, redone. Just add this, five chickens with an asterisk, no roosters, no peacocks, no geese, no ducks, no loud-bell. And each one of these chickens would have 100 square feet of range space. So, if you had five chickens, you'd have to have 500 square feet minimum fenced in to protect the chickens and the neighbors. And, uh, you'd need a chicken house with nest boxes. Uh, the ordinance already says that it has to be 10 feet away from the nearest abode. And it's very well-written ordinance. Uh, if there were renters, they would need the consent of their landlord to have chickens. The benefits of having a chicken is fresh homemade eggs, homegrown eggs. Um, the chickens eat bugs, seeds, seedlings, weeds, and they keep the yard clean with their egg and scratching. They're not a, um, difficult animal to care for. Uh, they're easy to feed and, uh, chicken feed, you've heard the expression, that's where they cost to feed them. Um, they love to eat leftovers, things like rice, apple cores, carrot peelings, still breads, cantaloupe seeds. Um, I used to buy cantaloupes just so I could feed my chickens. Um, and this would open up a new area for city kids to be involved in an agricultural thing with the 4H or the FFA, to raise chickens and show them at the county fair. So, I'd like to have that description added to this, that, that we could have just five chickens and, uh, all these different parameters involved. Thank you for your time.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Linda?
Yes, sir.
Uh, you, you said something about five chickens and no roosters?
No roosters, no loud-bell.
So, we do have a ordinance of livestock, and there was a pig?
Yes. At the time, uh, John Robinson was the city councilman, and he had a Vietnamese pot-nail pig, and he wrote exceptions into this ordinance for his pig, and that's the way y'all passed it back there in 2003.
It's 2003?
2003.
Okay. So, we need to, if we decide to do this, we need to write another ordinance, and, and then, uh, something about chickens, am I correct? Uh, Mr. Johnson, can you, can you elaborate on that a little bit, or City Manager?
Well, I, I think, uh, Councilman, that the ordinance that she referred to already covered the chickens, but then the, the Vietnamese pig was added. So, I think if we deleted the Vietnamese pig and just left the ordinance as it was, I think that would meet what she's asking.
Okay. Okay, I'm...
I, I don't think so, because it says poultry and livestock, and chickens are poultry, and they're within the city limits.
Yeah, but if, if we, no, I'm talking about the adjustment. If we eliminated the pig from the ordinance that you mentioned, I think that would meet your needs, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. Okay, you said, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Warren?
Thank you, Mayor Witt. Um, Council, um, few things I would like to update on. I mean, y'all can look up and look at me, and some of y'all may be in y'all feelings and whatnot, but if a man come to the podium, and y'all were elected, y'all wanted people to run around and mention y'all name, y'all can at least give a person respect, but look at me and ask it, because they talked to you, am I right or wrong, Mayor?
Right. I mean, we have...
Right. So, anyway, uh, update on Salome Jerry Paul. Where we at on that, Mayor? Council, where we at on that? Anybody? Anybody? It's been, it's been out there for years now. Where we at on that?
I think we're still working on it.
We're still working on it?
Yeah.
How long, much longer we gonna work on it, Mayor? How many more years?
Well, we hired a firm to do the, uh...
When do we hire the firm, Mayor? When?
Uh, I was having a meeting back.
Uh, what, what progress has he made? Nobody cares? Black community don't care? Okay. Now, my next question is, where we at on, uh, Muffin Coles?
City's getting a survey.
City's getting a survey? What you mean, city's getting a survey? My survey have already communicated with the city attorney and has given, willing to give you the boundaries, am I right or wrong?
That's what we're waiting on.
You waiting on it? Okay, if you would have signed the, the plan agreement, it was already on there. So, again, for progress in the black community, hindered because y'all, for some reason, don't wanna see growth and don't wanna see affordable housing. As a matter of fact, each one of y'all rolled out and said y'all would support the project financially, every need, one at a time coming out of office. All right, let's go to the next one. I ain't gonna stay long, Mayor. I'm gonna stay long enough just to say what I need to say and get on the body of it. Uh, Salome, um, the downtown sign, where the lights at did? When downhill, it's light shining on that sign. Why would I have lights shining downhill on the black side of town? You know, it's a downtown sign that got moved from Earl Street, there are no lights. At night, you can't even see it. It's, it's just...
It's feasible.
You, what do you mean? Is it feasible? You got lights down, it would take lights down downhill there and it'd be feasible. You saying that you're gonna make downtown identical, you don't remember saying that? You want it to be unified.
I understand, but...
Well, it's not unified, 'cause you don't drive downhill. You the mayor. You are elected citywide. You need to ride on the black side of town, too.
Been on there.
You ain't been downhill. You got lost leaving the gym, getting back on, um, I was the king, and I told you to turn two streets down till you're right. You don't know your way around the hood. And what's up with the name change of Earl Street? Where we at on that? Earl Street, the name changed from Earl Street to Presley. Y'all hadn't laid up here, gave her a key to the city, you don't remember? We got Amnesia. Where, where we at on it?
I don't know.
Well, how we, you the mayor, we got a council, a city attorney, we got $500,000 worth of people up here, and we don't got no answer for none of these questions.
Not for that. I mean, we voted to do it.
Well, why are they doing it?
I don't know.
What are you gonna do about it?
Talk to our city manager.
When? He right there.
I'll talk to him in the morning.
He right there, you gonna talk to him in the morning?
Yeah.
Why you gonna tell him now to do fixing? What's wrong with telling him now? He right here in prison.
'Cause I was discussing several things with him.
Mayor, have I signed on the other tweet? Thank you. And, and what about that meeting you promised to be set up? When we gonna get that set up?
I'm back in town now, and we'll set it up. I just got back in yesterday. Okay, Mr. Bowden?
Mr. Mayor, Council, uh, in my public comments, I wanted to make this observation on, during the budget workshop, Mr. Bowden, he had planned to be out of town for dinner, but not here for whatever reason, but it sends a bad message. We got a $75 million budget, and during the workshop period, there's no, only two-fifths of the, of the numbers are not covered. I'm sure that the council members had some conversations with the city manager, but during the pulling this call, two members gone. And that, that just sends a bad feeling for me in terms of whether you got an interest in the community. Uh, because during the pu, during the, during the budget hearing process, I mean, the, the workshop process, when you hatch it all up, coming to the nation to put it here, during the, but during the workshop process, there was not an opportunity afforded for a pull-up that even offered on the hand. So, therefore, the nation going to put it here, and you got three minutes. Well, I was suggesting, Mr. Mayor, should have more than three minutes, because there was not an opportunity for it to offer MP on the line out as we went through the budget process. So, a $75 million budget to expect those of us who pay attention to get up there and use that three minutes on a whole $75 million budget is, is unfair in my opinion. So, I would ask you to be a little more liberal than that on your timing for that very reason, because during the workshop process, there was not afforded opportunity for someone to say, well, what about this in the budget? I understand that the public should not be going back and forth through the budget process when the city manager and councilor get there, but I don't get the idea that a public should be able to say, I would like to see this in the budget, I would see that in the budget, that kind of thing. So, the nation would have to do that. So, uh, going forward, Mr. Mayor, I know he gonna be, I hope that the council members and the future Mayor will make every effort to be thorough during the budget workshop process. That's very serious. And so, you got three members here, two was absent, so the nation could be both going to put it here, that there was gonna be a pull-up discourse for itself from Mr. Jordan. And I think that sends a, a bad message. That's all I gotta say on that, and I talked more during the budget process.
Okay. The Department of Health and Public Health, primary election bill will be held in 2024.
The results of the August 20th, 2024 election as submitted by the Columbia County Supervisor of Elections Office are as follows. City Council District 12, Tammy Harris, 195 votes, Jake Hill Jr., 189 votes, total Oaks cast, 384.
All right, I, I, City Council Resolution 2024-094. Mr. Carter, you read that by now.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Council? How would I want to say it? She's got one more.
Think we just need to, don't we need to adopt the results as presented? Sure. Yes.
Okay. I'm sure we're...
Mr. Mayor, making most approved resolution, 2024-094.
Yes, I'm prepared to, but what you...
I'm sorry, it would be a motion to approve the results as submitted by the Columbia County Supervisor of Elections Office.
Second? I have a session, any discussion? Ms. Jackson, call it up.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Jordan again?
Yes.
Mayor Witt?
Yes.
And City Council Resolution 2024-094. Mr. Carter, you read that by now.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, you have before you Resolution Number 2024-094. Resolution, City Council of the City of Lake City, Florida, declaring Noah Walker to have been elected to the office of Mayor Councilmember-at-Large in the August 20th, 2024 municipal election, making certain findings of fact in support thereof, recognizing the expiration of said term on the third Monday in November 2028, directing the city clerk to reflect said election and expiration of term in such records of the city as is necessary and prudent, making certain findings of fact in support of the city clerk reflecting such, reflecting such election and expiration of term in the records of the city, repealing all prior resolutions in conflict and providing an effective date. Should the council wish to adopt this resolution, an appropriate motion would be to adopt Resolution Number 2024-894. It's read by title only.
Is there a motion of City Council Resolution 2024-094?
Mr. Mayor, making most approved resolution, 2024-095.
Second? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Council members, you have before you Resolution Number 2024-095. Resolution, City Council of the City of Lake City, Florida, declaring Noah Walker to have been elected to the office of Mayor Councilmember-at-Large in the August 20th, 2024 municipal election, making certain findings of fact in support thereof, recognizing the expiration of said term on the third Monday in November 2028, directing the city clerk to reflect said election and expiration of term in such records of the city as is necessary and prudent, making certain findings of fact in support of the city clerk reflecting such election and expiration of term in the records of the city, repealing all prior resolutions in conflict and providing an effective date, an appropriate motion to adopt this resolution, or be to adopt Resolution Number 2024-895. It's read by title only.
Is there a motion of City Council Resolution 2024-095?
Mr. Mayor, making most approved resolution, 2024-096. Resolution, City Council of the City of Lake City, Florida, declaring James Carter to have been elected City Councilmember for District 13 in the August 202024 municipal election, making certain findings of fact in support thereof, recognizing the expiration of said term on the third Monday in November 2028, directing the city clerk to reflect said election and expiration of term in such records of the city as is necessary and prudent, making certain findings of fact in support of the city clerk reflecting such election and expiration of term in the records of the city, repealing all prior resolutions in conflict and providing an effective date. Should the council wish to adopt this resolution, an appropriate motion would be to adopt Resolution Number 2024-896. It's read by title only.
Is there a motion of City Council Resolution 2024-096?
Mr. Mayor, making most approved resolution, 2024-096.
Second?
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Jordan again?
Yes.
Mayor Witt?
Yes.
And City Council Resolution 2024-094.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, before you, you have Resolution Number 2024-092. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Lake City, Florida, calling for a special election to be held Tuesday, November 5th, 2024, in conjunction with the general election of the state of Florida, providing for a referendum on the question reviewed by ordinance 2024-2288 concerning the salaries of City Council, of the City Council and the mayor, providing for the city clerk to coordinate said election with the Columbia County Supervisor of Elections, directing the city clerk to publish notice of the election, repealing all resolutions in conflict and providing an effective date. Should the council wish to adopt this resolution, an appropriate motion would be to adopt Resolution Number 2024-092. It's read by title only.
Mr. Bowden, you want to speak to this?
Yes, briefly, Mayor. It's more of an editorial kind of conference than anything else. Uh, affording the citizens an opportunity to vote is one of the most important things in, in local government you can even deal with. I say this before all my civil rights here, there's nothing more important to me than the right to vote. And I wanna thank, uh, you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Carter, Mr. Hill, for at least affording the people opportunity to have a voice on this particular issue. As I said, this issue does not prevent the city council from getting a raise in the future. You gonna get this raise this year because of the ordinance. Next year, when the budget comes up, if the city council votes at over 5%, or 7%, or 3%, or 4% raise, if you put a resolution, and you still can get the raise, but you will afford the people opportunity to speak. I think the city council ought to be able to give itself empowerment, give people a feeling that they have a part in this, and, and that's what you all did when you voted this far. So, I wanna thank you for doing that. Uh, I talked to Susan O'Leary, she's already sent it off to the printer to be printed, and uh, I'm almost certain that citizens in this community gonna vote in the firm that, that changes that so that they can have some input in the next legislative process. So, thank you to y'all, but the two of y'all for the floor is all about accountability and transparency. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion of City Council Resolution 2024?
Uh, Mayor? Uh, Ms. Linda?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Ms. Linda?
Yes, sir.
Uh, you said something about five chickens and no roosters?
No roosters, no loud-bell.
So, we do have a ordinance of livestock, and there was a pig?
Yes. At the time, John Robinson was the city councilman, and he had a Vietnamese pot-nail pig, and he wrote exceptions into this ordinance for his pig, and that's the way y'all passed it back there in 2003.
It's 2003?
2003.
Okay. So, we need to, if we decide to do this, we need to write another ordinance, and, and then, uh, something about chickens, am I correct? Uh, Mr. Johnson, can you, can you elaborate on that a little bit, or City Manager?
Well, I, I think, uh, Councilman, that the ordinance that she referred to already covered the chickens, but then the, the Vietnamese pig was added. So, I think if we deleted the Vietnamese pig and just left the ordinance as it was, I think that would meet what she's asking.
Okay. Okay, I'm...
I, I don't think so, because it says poultry and livestock, and chickens are poultry, and they're within the city limits.
Yeah, but if we, no, I'm talking about the adjustment. If we eliminated the pig from the ordinance that you mentioned, I think that would meet your needs, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. Okay, you said, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Warren?
Thank you, Mayor Witt. Um, Council, um, few things I would like to update on. I mean, y'all can look up and look at me, and some of y'all may be in y'all feelings and whatnot, but if a man come to the podium, and y'all were elected, y'all wanted people to run around and mention y'all name, y'all can at least give a person respect, but look at me and ask it, because they talked to you, am I right or wrong, Mayor?
Right. I mean, we have...
Right. So, anyway, uh, update on Salome Jerry Paul. Where we at on that, Mayor? Council? Where we at on that? Anybody? Anybody? It's been, it's been out there for years now. Where we at on that?
I think we're still working on it.
We're still working on it?
Yeah.
How long, much longer we gonna work on it, Mayor? How many more years?
Well, we hired a firm to do the, uh...
When do we hire the firm, Mayor? When?
Uh, I was having a meeting back.
Uh, what, what progress has he made? Nobody cares? Black community don't care? Okay. Now, my next question is, where we at on, uh, Muffin Coles?
City's getting a survey.
City's getting a survey? What you mean, city's getting a survey? My survey have already communicated with the city attorney and has given, willing to give you the boundaries, am I right or wrong?
That's what we're waiting on.
You waiting on it? Okay, if you would have signed the, the plan agreement, it was already on there. So, again, for progress in the black community, hindered because y'all, for some reason, don't wanna see growth and don't wanna see affordable housing. As a matter of fact, each one of y'all rolled out and said y'all would support the project financially, every need, one at a time coming out of office. All right, let's go to the next one. I ain't gonna stay long, Mayor. I'm gonna stay long enough just to say what I need to say and get on the body of it. Uh, Salome, um, the downtown sign, where the lights at did? When downhill, it's light shining on that sign. Why would I have lights shining downhill on the black side of town? You know, it's a downtown sign that got moved from Earl Street, there are no lights. At night, you can't even see it. It's, it's just...
It's feasible.
You, what do you mean? Is it feasible? You got lights down, it would take lights down downhill there and it'd be feasible. You saying that you're gonna make downtown identical, you don't remember saying that? You want it to be unified.
I understand, but...
Well, it's not unified, 'cause you don't drive downhill. You the mayor. You are elected citywide. You need to ride on the black side of town, too.
Been on there.
You ain't been downhill. You got lost leaving the gym, getting back on, um, I was the king, and I told you to turn two streets down till you're right. You don't know your way around the hood. And what's up with the name change of Earl Street? Where we at on that? Earl Street, the name changed from Earl Street to Presley. Y'all hadn't laid up here, gave her a key to the city, you don't remember? We got Amnesia. Where, where we at on it?
I don't know.
Well, how we, you the mayor, we got a council, a city attorney, we got $500,000 worth of people up here, and we don't got no answer for none of these questions?
Not for that. I mean, we voted to do it.
Well, why are they doing it?
I don't know.
What are you gonna do about it?
Talk to our city manager.
When? He right there.
I'll talk to him in the morning.
He right there, you gonna talk to him in the morning?
Yeah.
Why you gonna tell him now to do fixing? What's wrong with telling him now? He right here in prison.
'Cause I was discussing several things with him.
Mayor, have I signed on the other tweet? Thank you. And, and what about that meeting you promised to be set up? When we gonna get that set up?
I'm back in town now, and we'll set it up. I just got back in yesterday. Okay, Mr. Bowden?
Mr. Mayor, Council, uh, in my public comments, I wanted to make this observation on, during the budget workshop, Mr. Bowden, he had planned to be out of town for dinner, but not here for whatever reason, but it sends a bad message. We got a $75 million budget, and during the workshop period, there's no, only two-fifths of the, of the numbers are not covered. I'm sure that the council members had some conversations with the city manager, but during the pulling this call, two members gone. And that, that just sends a bad feeling for me in terms of whether you got an interest in the community. Uh, because during the pu, during the, during the budget hearing process, I mean, the, the workshop process, when you hatch it all up, coming to the nation to put it here, during the, but during the workshop process, there was not an opportunity afforded for a pull-up that even offered on the hand. So, therefore, the nation going to put it here, and you got three minutes. Well, I was suggesting, Mr. Mayor, should have more than three minutes, because there was not an opportunity for it to offer MP on the line out as we went through the budget process. So, a $75 million budget to expect those of us who pay attention to get up there and use that three minutes on a whole $75 million budget is, is unfair in my opinion. So, I would ask you to be a little more liberal than that on your timing for that very reason, because during the workshop process, there was not afforded opportunity for someone to say, well, what about this in the budget? I understand that the public should not be going back and forth through the budget process when the city manager and councilor get there, but I don't get the idea that a public should be able to say, I would like to see this in the budget, I would see that in the budget, that kind of thing. So, the nation would have to do that. So, uh, going forward, Mr. Mayor, he gonna be, I hope that the council members and the future Mayor will make every effort to be thorough during the budget workshop process. That's very serious. And so, you got three members here, two was absent, so the nation could be both going to put it here, that there was gonna be a pull-up discourse for itself from Mr. Jordan. And I think that sends a, a bad message. That's all I gotta say on that, and I talked more during the budget process.
Okay. The Department of Health and Public Health, primary election bill will be held in 2024.
The results of the August 20th, 2024 election as submitted by the Columbia County Supervisor of Elections Office are as follows. City Council District 12, Tammy Harris, 195 votes, Jake Hill Jr., 189 votes, total Oaks cast, 384.
All right, I, I, City Council Resolution 2024-094, that's 094. Mr. Carter, you read that by now.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Council?
Okay, well, I would also say, I'm sorry, she's got one more.
Think we just need to, don't we need to adopt the results as presented? Sure. Yes.
Okay. I'm sure we're...
Mr. Mayor, making most approved resolution, 2024-094.
Yes, I'm prepared to, but what you...
I'm sorry, it would be a motion to approve the results as submitted by the Columbia County Supervisor of Elections Office.
Second?
Second.
I have a session, any discussion? Ms. Jackson, call it up.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Jordan again?
Yes.
Mayor Witt?
Yes.
And City Council Resolution 2024-094. Mr. Carter, you read that by now.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, you have before you Resolution Number 2024-094. Resolution, City Council of the City of Lake City, Florida, declaring Tammy Harris to have been elected City Councilmember for District 12 in the August 202024 municipal election, making certain findings of fact in support thereof, recognizing the expiration of said term on the third Monday in November 2028, directing the city clerk to reflect said election and expiration of term in such records of the city as is necessary and prudent, making certain findings of fact in support of the city clerk reflecting such, reflecting such election and expiration of term in the records of the city, repealing all prior resolutions in conflict and providing an effective date. Should the council wish to adopt this resolution, an appropriate motion would be to adopt Resolution Number 2024-894. It's read by title only.
Is there a motion of City Council Resolution 2024-094?
Mr. Mayor, making most approved resolution, 2024-094.
Second? I'm prepared to, but what you...
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Jordan again?
Yes.
Mayor Witt?
Yes.
Next, City Council Resolution 2024-094.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Council members, you have before you Resolution Number 2024-095. Resolution, City Council of the City of Lake City, Florida, declaring Noah Walker to have been elected to the office of Mayor Councilmember-at-Large in the August 20th, 2024 municipal election, making certain findings of fact in support thereof, recognizing the expiration of said term on the third Monday in November 2028, directing the city clerk to reflect said election and expiration of term in such records of the city as is necessary and prudent, making certain findings of fact in support of the city clerk reflecting such election and expiration of term in the records of the city, repealing all prior resolutions in conflict and providing an effective date, an appropriate motion to adopt this resolution, or be to adopt Resolution Number 2024-895. It's read by title only.
Is there a motion of City Council Resolution 2024-095?
Mr. Mayor, making most approved resolution, 2024-095. Second?
I'm prepared to, but what you...
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Jordan again?
Yes.
Mayor Witt?
Yes.
Lake City Council Resolution 2024-096. Mr. Carter, you read that by now.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Council members, before you, you have Resolution Number 2024-096. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Lake City, Florida, declaring James Carter to have been elected City Councilmember for District 13 in the August 202024 municipal election, making certain findings of fact in support thereof, recognizing the expiration of said term on the third Monday in November 2028, directing the city clerk to reflect said election and expiration of term in such records of the city as is necessary and prudent, making certain findings of fact in support of the city clerk reflecting such election and expiration of term in the records of the city, repealing all prior resolutions in conflict and providing an effective date. Should the council wish to adopt this resolution, an appropriate motion would be to adopt Resolution Number 2024-896. It's read by title only.
Is there a motion of, uh, 2024-096?
Mr. Mayor, I make that motion of 2024-096.
Second?
That a motion, I'm prepared to, but what you...
Mr. Jordan again?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mayor Witt?
Yes.
Next, City Council Resolution 2024-096. Mr. Carter, you read that by now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, before you, you have Resolution Number 2024-092. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Lake City, Florida, calling for a special election to be held Tuesday, November 5th, 2024, in conjunction with the general election of the state of Florida, providing for a referendum on the question reviewed by ordinance 2024-2288 concerning the salaries of City Council, of the City Council and the mayor, providing for the city clerk to coordinate said election with the Columbia County Supervisor of Elections, directing the city clerk to publish notice of the election, repealing all resolutions in conflict and providing an effective date. Should the council wish to adopt this resolution, an appropriate motion would be to adopt Resolution Number 2024-092. It's read by title only.
Mr. Bowden, you want to speak to this?
Yes, briefly, Mayor. It's more of an editorial kind of conference than anything else. Uh, affording the citizens an opportunity to vote is one of the most important things in, in local government you can even deal with. I say this before, all my civil rights here, there's nothing more important to me than the right to vote, and I wanna thank, uh, you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Carter, Mr. Hill, for at least affording the people opportunity to have a voice on this particular issue. As I said, this issue does not prevent the city council from getting a raise in the future. You gonna get this raise this year because of the ordinance. Next year, when the budget comes up, if the city council votes at over 5%, or 7%, or 2% of 3%, or 4% raise, if you put a resolution, and you still can get the raise, but you will afford the people opportunity to speak. I think the city council ought to be able to give itself an empowering system, give people a feeling that they have a part in this, and, and that's what you all did when you voted this far. So, I wanna thank you for doing that. Uh, I talked to Susan O'Leary, she's already sent it off to the printer to be printed, and uh, I'm almost certain that citizens in this community gonna vote in the firm that, that changes that so that they can have some input in the next legislative process. So, thank you to y'all, but the two of y'all for the floor is all about accountability and transparency. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion of City Council Resolution 2024?
Mr. Mayor, I'm on the agenda, you, I'm on the, every item.
Okay, you're sitting behind the panel.
It doesn't matter, but my paper's up there.
Okay, come up and talk.
What, what if he sits behind the pole, have to do with what I put on the paper? Y'all, y'all made these rules. You put this up here, they say, what, what does that say? I get exactly like y'all said, and now y'all don't wanna follow the rules, and now it's a problem.
Okay, go ahead and speak.
Don't matter where I'm sitting at, if my name on there, call my name and ask me what I'm, I'm gonna speak to the item, now that's the right thing to do, Mayor.
All right, go ahead.
I don't understand, y'all got such personal grudges against me because I'm right on the issues, and y'all are wrong on the issues. What you wanna do? You want to hire assassination team for me? I ain't going nowhere. I'm younger than you, and I'll live you. What y'all, y'all feelings for? 'Cause I want best for my own community where I was born and raised and live there. That's the most stupidest thing I've ever seen in this world. Y'all don't say nothing. They act like they're Jeffrey, raising hell right now, y'all ain't saying nothing. They, that's what they do, 'cause that's where they live, and that's what I do, 'cause it's the way I live, born and raised. And I, and first of all, let me say this, Mayor, I'm gonna get to the point. Uh, unlike Mr. Bowden, who's a good friend of mine, like a father figure, and has been a great mentor, I disagree. I'm not thanking neither one of you for anything y'all did to pass that piece of legislation to do the right. You don't get a thank you for doing the right thing. That is the right thing to do, and who is wrong is the two council members that did not vote in favor of doing the right thing. And unlike Mr. Bowden, in asking that a thank you go out to the three council members, meaning Mr. Carter for doing the right thing, you, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Hill, he didn't do the right thing, he just, just didn't say nothing. So, his side is end up being a vote yes, in the firm is. And so, what should happen, and I pray that many people are listening, and I'm gonna tell them, listen to this, that come 2026, that we get rid of Ms. Young, and we get rid of Mr. Jordan again, just like we worked to get rid of Mr. Hill. And that is what we're going to do as a community. As a community, we put them down, and as a community, we're gonna remove them for how they have reneged, and how they treat this community, and have not held up to the end of the deal. And I will put my money where my mouth is at, and you can ask anybody who has won this election in this year's cycle, I mean business about what I mean business about. You're not gonna play with my time, you're not gonna play with my money, you're not gonna play with my community, you're not gonna play with my people, and you're not gonna play what I'm trying to build and what I'm trying to do. If you think you're gonna destroy what I'm trying to build, you're standing on shaky ground, sir. That go for any one of you, matter to... I put you there, I'll remove you. I put you there, I'll remove you. You ran five times until I put my money and my time behind you, you didn't see this office, until I put my time and money behind me, you didn't see this office.
Hey, I don't...
Quarter of a minute, you didn't see this office. Ain't one quarter, man. I need to have him removed out here. I don't want my name called. You can have your name called.
Okay, that's enough. All right? Is there a motion of City Council Resolution 2024-092?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve Resolution 2024-092.
Second? I'll make a second. Any discussion? Ms. Jackson, call it up.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mayor Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Man, I'm totally lost, I don't know where we are.
We are taking, we're taking a vote on item number five, which is City Council Resolution number twenty twenty four zero nine two, and that's authorizing the conference special election to be held on Tuesday, November fifth, in conjunction with the general election for the state of Florida for the preliminary questions. Mr. Jernigan?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Next is fire assessment, voting here in, uh, whatever public hearing on this, Mr. Warren.
No, sir.
Mr. Lemon?
Uh, Harvard Lovely, I do not live in the city, but I own, uh, four properties in the city. I received one assessment sheet. Should I receive three for the other properties? I'll receive one. And I own four properties. Why didn't I not receive the three others?
I don't know how that is.
It came from the office of the city manager, so I was just wondering why.
So Mayor, if I may, I think that would be a question for the tax collector.
Yeah. I'd like to tax collect.
Okay, but wouldn't you guys have let the tax collector know?
I guess we would.
Well, the other thing, you know, kind of coincides with the voting. I live in the county, but own property in the city, and I wish there was some way that people who own property in the city could vote on you guys. You know, if you live in the city, you can vote for a county commissioner, but is there anything that could be done to allow a person such as myself to vote where my properties are located for the councilperson that handles that area? And I know that you don't know the answer, but maybe the city attorney might be able to address that.
I don't think it's possible. I mean, it's not up to us, it's just, you have to live where you think.
I know. Well, maybe I'll just move temporarily to one of my units and vote, vote there. Uh, but the other question, um, understand that everything costs more, and my tenants, I haven't raised their rent in several years because they can report it. But I know what kind of tenant I have, I'm dealing with, and I just think the increase is just a little too much. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else in the public want to speak to this fire assessment? Is there a motion of City Council Resolution twenty twenty four dash zero nine two?
Mr. Mayor, the, the resolution needs to be read into the record.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, council members, you have before you Resolution number twenty twenty four dash zero nine seven. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Lake City, Florida, constituting the fiscal year twenty twenty four twenty five annual fire assessment resolution relating to the provision of fire protection services, facilities, and programs in the city of Lake City, Florida, providing findings, providing authority, providing definitions and interpretation, providing for reimposition of the fire protection assessments against assessed property located within the city of Lake City for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty four, approving final fire assessment rates, approving the final assessment role, confirming the twenty twenty four preliminary rate resolution, providing for effective adoption of annual resolution, providing for conflicts, and providing an effective date. Should the council wish to adopt this resolution, an appropriate motion would be to adopt Resolution number twenty twenty four dash zero nine seven is read by title only.
Okay. Is there a motion of City Council Resolution twenty twenty four dash zero nine seven?
Mr. Mayor, I make the most approved Resolution twenty twenty four dash zero nine seven.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? It's actually called the vote.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yeah.
Mayor Witt?
Yes. Okay. See, the purpose of this public hearing is to accept input from all entities party relative to discussion, consideration, and intent of approval of the city's twenty twenty four dash twenty twenty five proposed millage rate and operating budget. We offer our opinion, we're all in attendance, speaking regarding to the budget, and ask the law speaker, the other faculty, the name and address, and this time the city finance director will provide a summary of the budget process and address those items essential to provide with the state of Florida President Bill Trump requirements.
The City Council proposes a tentative millage rate of five point two four one zero mils and a tentative capital and operating budget of seventy five million, two hundred and thirty three thousand, five hundred and fifty six dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five. Council action tonight constitutes the tentative budget hearing as a requirement by state trim criteria and was announced to the general public by trim notice mailed by Clemmie County Property Praiser on August fourteenth, twenty twenty four. During this hearing, the following agenda will be addressed. The council will discuss the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five millage and operating budget and allow citizen input as appropriate. The council will write announcement of the tentative millage rate proposed for adoption, and any increase, decrease, or no change. The city attorney will read by title, Millage Resolution twenty twenty four zero nine eight. The City Council will adopt Millage Resolution number twenty twenty four dash zero nine eight on first reading. The city attorney will read by title, Budget Resolution number twenty twenty four dash zero nine nine. The City Council will adopt Budget Resolution number twenty twenty four dash zero nine nine on first reading.
At this time, Mr. Mayor, the tentative budget hearing is open for discussion for public input qualified discussion by City Council. Mr. Warren.
I don't think nobody owns more property in this city than me, and I want to know, Mayor, where did this body find it inappropriate, and where is the appropriateness of even raising the millage? If you all would have got off your sorry, and gave yourselves a raise on top of that, but did not aggressively do the things necessary not to raise taxes, you did not aggressively go after voluntary amortization, you did not go after affordable housing so you could have built a, a better tax base in the CRA, right? Let me tell you another thing you didn't do. You didn't go after jobs, right? You didn't increase your cut, you didn't get what Swan River Water Management to expand that so you can expand water, and you can have more consumption use. You did nothing. And now you want us to pay for it? You want people who live in my community, which is District ten, Cheverion District, who is the poorest district in the city of Lake City. No people can afford to pay no increase. That's nuts. What y'all should have done was took the budget you had from last year and made it work. You spent money out of the opera, right? Take some of that opera money and then flux it in and keep the millage rate down. Every time the, uh, tax, the property appraisal assessed our houses, it is an increase. That's a tax increase right there. That's the military increase. Every time, across the board, you can ask anybody in business got anything to do with real estate, and they'll tell you that's what it is. We pay taxes twice living in this city anyhow. Furthermore, Mayor, what have we got? What have we got? We, I, I live on the raggedest roads, roads caving in. I got property that I'm trying to build affordable housing. Y'all, it's dirt roads, half of it, y'all throw out, throw out milling on half of it, half of it is a dirt road, won't fix it. Go into my office, and I rent out on Easy Street, it's just potholes everywhere. You, you call Public Works, and, and you, you try to get the asphalt crew out there. Sometimes they got asphalt, sometimes they don't. What have we got, Mayor? Blighted. Everywhere, you promised to get it up, you, you put almost a hundred thousand dollars in the budget, you ain't got not one house knocked down yet that's blighted. Nothing. But you want, you, how do you justify? How can you justify in front of serious taxpaying people? Serious taxpaying people and say that somehow, you, y'all are there because you ain't even paid your private taxes to your house, you're two years behind.
Why don't you just run for the state?
You, you, you two, why don't you resign from it?
Why don't you run?
Resign from it, resign from it. They're going to give it to you anyhow, resign from it. I'm going to be there in twenty twenty six, just resign from it. Yeah, everybody, I asked the whole, I asked the whole hood, I beat up. So that's, you, you gone. I didn't even worry about you. Mayor, what have we got?
If any of you, uh, you fix that, that's why it's going to help.
No, 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 Mayor. You cannot, and you should not, raise the taxes. I'm asking nicely that we take the millage rate back to what it was and not do an increase. It is unfair, and it is not the people's fault, it is the council's fault that you all did not do the proper things that have caused the increase. So if anybody should be paying, it should be the council that should be paying, not the citizens. That would be the fair and right thing to do, Mayor. If any of y'all had any, that's why I don't stand up for y'all flag, I don't stand up for y'all prayers, because y'all don't mean none of that stuff y'all saying. They, none of that stuff y'all say is in y'all actions. As it relates to my community, my skin color, my people, and the citizens all around Lake City, both black, white, Indian, everything else. If you're going to raise their taxes, you don't believe in the same God that everybody else is serving. God ain't pleased with what y'all getting ready to do.
Three minutes.
Ain't no three minutes, he said, you're not standing. Worry about yourself, worry about yourself, add stuff on the agenda and emergency.
Let's get it down.
Make me mad, I, I go ahead and do a, I go ahead and get y'all off this early.
Okay, then comment from the other.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to wait for the city attorney to come back, if you don't mind. There's some issues I want to talk about, he may need to address.
Tell him that right now.
You can get a picture of the bathroom.
I was.
You can go ahead.
Go ahead, anyway, because we're going to talk about, maybe recalling some people.
Mr. Mayor, I'm trying to understand this process. Uh, I know the public here is open, but there's a resolution dealing with the millers, and there's a resolution dealing with the budget. So am I talking about the both of them at the same time?
If you want to.
Well, okay, well, let's talk about the millage rate, Mr. Mayor. I've been opposed to increasing the millers from the day one. Uh, the county have not increased their millers in years, in fact, they're rolling it back. The school board, as I mentioned, or the school board and the city council board are the same miller rate, but I talked to Mr. Wilson, and they just want to be sure I was right. He can't even recall when the last time they increased their miller rate. So not been in the increase in millers by any other negative body in this community over the past several years, let's get that straight. The school board did not increase their millers. Their miller rate is lower, and what the city management is proposing that our, our millers goes up to the same as them. I don't understand the relationship, but I just want to be sure that we understand that if you all increase your millage, you'll be the only elected body in this community that has done that in years. Uh, I'm opposed to it because I pay property taxes, and frankly, I don't want to pay any more property taxes. But most importantly, I'm here for those who at least afford to do it. Uh, the people who rent, and there's men and women on the east side of, and not for the rural track. We have a person who owns third or fourth pieces of property that they rent, and if I'm going to be, a, a minimum, a minimum increase, not a minimum, but it'll be increased. That's if you own a fifty dollar third piece of property. But for the people who rent it, the landlords, they're going to be multiplied at about part of the time. Do you think they're going to eat that? They're going to pass that on to the lease who couldn't afford it. They're going to pay it to the people who go out there cleaning the hotel rooms every day, working on fast food joint. That's what going to pass on through, so you're not just taxing the property, you're taxing the leases in our community who can afford to pay for it. So that's what I'm telling you for today. Yeah, I can pay my little deficits, I don't want to do it, but I can. But what about those people who can't do? What about that lady who, if the son comes and says, granted, you got two dollars, and she said, son, wait till I check her. That lady cannot afford fifty more dollars, and there's no need for you to do it. I remember two years ago, or last year, that the city council instructed the city manager then to go back, city manager did a budget with a ministry increase. And I remember he was Mr. Reed, or Mr. Sampson, who said, listen, no, 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 we're not going to start it. Go back and bring us a budget, bounce budget without raising the miller rate. So we know it can happen, it's just a matter of whether you want to do that or not. There's no need to do it, Mayor. Or I, I, I came to the first workshop, and this, or watched out on the work, but I can't get it. There's a budget truck, and nobody asked a question, maybe, I'm, I got to ask this. The budget truck and the toilet workshop, it's like, like two hundred thousand dollars for this budget truck. And I guess I want to curious as to now, is that a replacement? Is that a new truck? Why is that a replacement truck? And if, and if it's a replacement truck, why can't be financed over period? That's two hundred thousand dollars right there that can be saved, upfront, you know? And, uh, the other concern I got, Mayor, is, is how you go about determining what's free going to be repaid in, in, uh, mill? Is that a recommendation from the staff, or is that a city councilperson pointing out the street? The reason I would raise that issue is this. I see Sam, no big Sam Street is set to be repaid in mill. I'm very familiar with, with Sam. Sam go from Washington, curves around and come back to Pallas Street. On Sam Street, there's probably three or four residences. A church there, several there, business church there, that on a good day, they may have ten cars there. Uh, so there's no serious traffic there. I drove the street a number of times, I, I drove out there when it was raining just to be sure it wasn't foot. The water slows down to the end of the curb, spills out into the wet, so there's not a flood issue there at all. I don't see no evidence of a serious, no potholes there. Compare that to Allen's, Coach Allen's Lane, that goes from Marion Street now to the Stock Side, about six hundred, six hundred and two should be exact. Potholes, traffic every day. I suggest you this, that there's more people use Allen's to go to the recent community center, go to the, the games, buses go there, as a, as a, what do you call it, shelter, all of that. I would suggest you that there's more traffic than you use that little short road in a day than you use Sam Street in a month. So I guess I want to know what's the criteria? How do we come, how, how you decide which street going to be mill or to pay? Is that a city council decision, is that a staff decision?
Oh, the staff usually gives recommendations, say, manage the Pallas, we can tweak the corner.
Okay. Well, I, I'm not trying to judge it, but I want to make observation, is that if you go down there and drive from Marion Street to that Stock Side, it's in bad shape. You go off Sam Street and drive from Washington all the way around to Pallas Street, then you, you, you can't hardly justify it. So maybe one, is, is it been done? I don't know why it been done. But I can tell you this, there's some streets in this community, it's a lot worse shape than Sam. There is a, almost sanitized, that is probably going to be condemned at some point in time. There's a church there, when you get, there's one they live in a mobile home, there's a nice mobile home on the right, there's a new mobile home that's on curb, so there's no activity on the street. There's no serious potholes on the street. I drive, I don't, I rode on it, but it was storming and raining, so I don't, I don't understand how that street got to be more important than Allen's. And that's just an observation, and I, I hope there'll be some consideration given to looking at, uh, not doing that. But most importantly, Mayor, I don't see no need for the increase in my taxes. If nobody else doing it, it makes no sense at this point in time. State Farm sent me a notice the other day, and I'm waiting on this note. My home loan insurance went up forty percent. That's home loan insurance, and you'll pay off such as you go right there. So what this local government should be doing is trying to keep taxes down. We already got enough expenses. I maintain you get city manager to balance the budget without increasing the miller I maintain you got city manager in balance, plus without increasing the millage rate. All you gotta do is go back there, ride to it, look at that budget truck, Savitz would do right there, look some of the things that you can cut out and get down to the budget and present the millage rate. So I'm opposed to it, Mayor. At this point here, I'm not opposed to it next point here also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, concerning Coach Anders Lane, I've mentioned Coach Anders Lane, and it is very important, it is really good and it's very important. One of the main reasons is because of the emergency shelter being there. But there was some kind of feedback that I got, reasoning for us not being able to get that. Not I'll have, I'll get the information like that, because I did.
Steve, I want to address that.
So we are historically not opposed to paving any road. Staff does have feedback as far as conditions of road. Some of it is due to maintenance and repair that goes in the road, some of it is due to potholes and conditions. We typically take it to our management team and say, "It's all the council will put a road together." Usually it comes as a recommendation from that. And then we also have citizen input, we do have a lot of citizen input. We have a lot of calls that come into public works that are requesting roads to be paved. So there are several things that go into that. There is no one person that makes a decision on paving a road, no one person. Now, I will say this, if collectively as a group, we want to change a road, for example, Coach Anders or something like that, the money being in the budget can be reallocated. We just put in that budget for that road, but if we decide we want to pave another road, we can do that, it's not written in stone as far as that goes. We just come back before you guys and get your approval to do a change. We basically come back and ask for reallocation of funds at that point. So there are a lot of defining factors that goes into picking a road. And I will say, Mr. Mayor, I probably don't write it more than some people. I don't know what the trip is on it, but there are tons of things that go into that. So we don't, we literally don't just close our eyes and pick a spot.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Let me just say this though, Mayor. I still don't get the explanation in terms of why Sims Street.
Okay.
And I think it's important, tomorrow, take your time, he'll ride the street and then you can tell whether or not that's a street that should be considered for the miller and paid. It's just no justification, there's no traffic. And I guarantee you that, I don't have a reason to lie. There's no significant traffic on Sims Street.
Okay, Mr. McCullough, if you want to speak.
My name is Lester McCullough, I live at four eighty North West Gibson Lane here in Lake City, Florida. I'm a property owner as well. Usually what is going on in this city for the best instance of the city, I'm all for it. But I'm a senior citizen and I also, and I find it very displeasing that you guys are considering raising this, raising taxes and all of the millage rate. And also, I'm a senior citizen. I can't afford all of these increases and it's gonna be a burden on me. And I have renters also that can't afford it. And I'm gonna have to do the same thing with you, who was talking about Mr. Warren, Mr. Bob. Increase common, we're gonna pass long term, I tell us. I'm already charging two hundred dollars below the average fellow rate here in Lake City right now. And presently, it's a problem for me. So I wonder if you guys have to reconsider and do not raise the taxes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Limley, I agree with Mr. McCullough on this similar situation. I have three rental properties, I bought one to fix up and sell and my tenants can't afford more than what they currently pay. But I do have to commend that the city does an excellent job with the street sweeper. On the property I bought this summer on Monroe, it goes up and down and it keeps the debris off. But a concern I have is County Commissioner Rocky Ford put two manufactured homes on day, which is None Improved Street. The units are still for sale. And what's gonna happen if they happen to get sold at a ridiculous amount? When the waste truck has to go by it, but you know, it's grass right now. And to my knowledge, the city hasn't been mowing it. The current residents have been mowing it. And I think Mr. Ford does have it mowed. And I was just wondering if there was any funds in the budget to approve this road if this unit, these two units get salted. And I do think we need to live the budget and not increase the amount. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay. There's no further comments regarding the matter. I now ask the city finance director to state for the record, the taxing authority, the proposed millage rate to be adopted, the rollback millage rate and the change the tentative millage rate represented to the current year of millage.
The city council of the city of Lake City as a taxing authority appraises a tentative tax on all property located within the city of Lake City, Florida at the rate of five point two four one zero mils for the fiscal year 2024-2025 operating budget. The current year proposed operating millage rate is an eleven point nine one percent increase from the rollback, four point six eight three one rollback millage rate as defined by Florida statutes.
The highest the city attorney to read Millage Resolution 2024 dash zero nine eight by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. You have before you Resolution number 2024 dash zero nine eight. A resolution in the city of Lake City, Florida, adopting the millage rate and tentative levy of ad lorm taxes for fiscal year 2024-2025, making certain findings of fact in support of the city adopting said millage rate and tentative levy of ad lorm taxes, repealing all prior resolutions in conflict and providing an effective date.
A call for a motion for adoption of Millage Resolution 2024 dash zero nine eight.
Mr. Mayor. I approve Resolution number twenty twenty four dash zero nine nine.
Nine eight.
Nine eight, I'm sorry, ninety, apologize.
Is there a second? Five seconds for the thing. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
This is obviously a difficult conversation and decision. I've, over the last few weeks, talked a lot to the staff and I've talked a lot to the citizens. Another staff would like us to increase this millage rate. I understand what they're hoping to do with it. It would be my suggestion that we keep the current millage rate but approve the budget as presented and fund it out of the general fund and work this year to tighten this thing up. I think this is, it's tough. Like I said, I know it may be frustrating some people, but I just don't feel like this is the right time economically to be increasing the millage rate, to be increasing the taxes on the citizens. There's a lot of other things going on. It's an election year, a lot of people nervous about how the next year's gonna look. Just doesn't feel like the right time to do it, that's my two cents.
I've been here nineteen years and I've tried my best to keep it down. We kept it in the forward loop for nineteen years. So I'm not ever in favor of raising it. They spoke with staff and they recommend it to do their job, they need to. The science because of it.
Wait, Mayor, can I meet?
Sure.
Also, of course, I wanted this resolution done. And I'm not in favor of, you know, when you talk about raising taxes and putting that burden on senior citizens and people like that. But, you know, every year, everything's going up. It's not just taxes, you know, gas is going up, the food's going up, your clothing is going up. I mean, like, everything is going up. And that's one reason why, you know, I totally understand why the staff want this done. So that's why I'm in agreeance with it. It's just one of those things, it's a subject that a lot of people do not want to hear. We're gonna raise, we wanna, they wanna hear what we're gonna lower. But it's unfortunate at this time with the staff we have here, this is what they are trying to accomplish and that's why I'm in favor of it. So just keep that in mind.
Well, if I may say, at this time, Mayor, I'm really not in favor of it. I never want to see taxes raised. But as I said in the initial of this discussion on the taxes and piggyback off what Councilman Jany said, everything has increased, everything. I don't care where you go, cost has increased. And we have to do what's in the best interest of this city. And we're looking at elevation, but how can there be elevation if we don't make some type of increase? And it's been gone without increase for so long. That's why it's in our lap today, that there need to be, not that we wanted to do it, but there is really a need for some type of increase.
Thank you.
Mr. Jurnigan?
Yes.
Mayor Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Nay.
Okay. I have city attorney to read Budget Resolution 2024 dash zero nine nine by title.
Let me get it on my screen, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have before you Resolution number twenty twenty four dash zero nine nine. A resolution of the city of Lake City, Florida, adopting the tentative budget for fiscal year 2024-25, making certain findings of fact in support of the city adopting said tentative budget, repealing all prior resolutions in conflict and providing an effective date.
Okay. I call for a motion for adoption of Budget Resolution 2024 dash zero nine nine.
Mr. Mayor. Move to approve twenty twenty four dash zero nine nine.
Is it a second?
Second.
A motion on a second and a discussion on this. The science we felt the wrong.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Jurnigan?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mayor Witt?
Yes. All right. Now we approve of the consent agenda, that's kind of thirteen and fourteen. Does that motion to approve the consent agenda? All right, thirteen and fourteen.
Move to approve the consent agenda minus thirteen and fourteen.
Second.
On favor, sir.
Right.
Okay. Okay, good. Item thirteen. The city council resolution twenty twenty four dash one zero three. Mr. Parker, you step back down a little.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, you have before you Resolution number twenty twenty four dash one zero three. Resolution of the city of Lake City, Florida, approving that certain annual consulting services agreement with J and Consulting Services, Inc., for consulting services relating to providing a long-term financial overview of the city's financial circumstances, making certain findings of fact in support thereof, recognizing the authority of the mayor to execute and bind the city to set agreement, directing the mayor to execute and bind the city to set agreement, repealing all prior resolutions in conflict and providing an effective date. Should the council wish to adopt this resolution, appropriate motion would be to adopt Resolution number twenty twenty four dash one three as read by title only.
Mr. Warren, if you want to speak to that.
Mr. Mayor, again, on item eight, why was I overlooked?
No, we had it too.
No, no, it's numbered. You get a chance to speak here. Item line number seven, and you get a chance to speak here, item line number eight.
I delayed it for a bit. It's all one.
It's not all one, it's got numbers by it, it's separated.
But we had a discussion about it and I was leaning on that one. So let's get to this.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I call for Chavella Young and Ricky Jurnigan to resign. Thanks for the recall.
You speak to it. Okay. If there are motion, the city council resolution twenty twenty four dash one hundred and thirty.
Move to approve twenty twenty four dash one oh three. Sir.
I would propose a second discussion.
Yes, I would like to discuss this item. Mayor, this new consultant, we, as I looked at the, this individual and what he brings to the table, of course, it looked like he's out of Chicago or out of some other state. We have a pretty good team here and they are aware of the different things that we need. We don't need another person to come in and tell our financial advisor, our financial director on what he or she needs to do. However, we hired a financial, he's got a master's degree in finance and we hired a very, very good city manager. And I think that with him being here, we don't need to hire, we don't need to hire somebody else that he could do the job to do. In other words, he could do that same job that this guy can do and we can save thirty nine thousand dollars. And the way it looked like he's only working twelve hours, if I'm not mistaken, he's working only twelve hours and getting paid approximately thirty nine thousand dollars a year to do this and he's working twelve hours a week. Now, I don't have a master's degree in finance, but I just feel like that needs to be, our city manager should be doing this job along with our financial director. With those two there working to accomplish this mission, I think we should be able to save that thirty nine thousand dollars. And I think it should be removed totally from the agenda and it should not be approved tonight. That's money that we could save to do something else with.
Council member, I'd like to set up a chat.
No, 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 not yet, not yet. Again, I say this in good faith, I don't have nothing malice about this individual. He's probably one of the best in the business. But bringing somebody else in to look over our financial budget or circumstances or situation or whatever, I just think that this right here should not be executed at this time. Maybe on down the road, you know, maybe down the road a little piece, but as of right now, I don't think that this would be a good fit for the city of Lake City. And again, that's just an opinion. And I know that you can get this done without hiring somebody else. You and our finance director, along with the other staff members that we have here, I don't think that that's necessary.
Can I address that?
Sure.
So tonight, we've heard some of the citizens complaining about roads and other things. And some of those complaints stem from the fact that there needs to be long-term capital improvements, long-term planning. Well, how do you do that? Well, that hasn't been done in town for years. So some of the things that this gentleman will help me do is to come up with replacement schedules. Every road should have a replacement schedule, that's what they're talking about. There's no replacement schedule on our roads. So we get together and do as best we can, but this would be an organized replacement schedule, reserve studies, GFOA, our government finance operation authority, budget awards, and GFOA audit certification. Now, you want those things because that improves your bond rate.
Yes.
You want, let me finish it, I may, councilman. You want to improve your bond rating so that when you borrow money to do things for the city, it's cheaper. Right now, you're paying a lot of money because your bond rating is not where it should be. Then you want a formal debt management plan. Some of the citizens are complaining about how much they have to pay because they don't see a debt management plan. Well, I wanted to put one in place and this gentleman helped me do that. A long-term capital plan is what the city needs for stormwater, for water, for sewer, for gas, for roads. And even a pay-as-you-go plan for other things that just pop up that you hadn't really planned for. And a long-term contentious reserve plan. And on economic and revenue enhancement, this gentleman will help you with that. Regular economic updates, well-defined and coordinated economic strategy development, revenue generating possibilities, economic development initiatives, long-term development goals, long-term development goals, economic development strategy and innovative agency incorporation. One person can't do that, there's so many things that need to be done. You know, you can talk to the staff when I'm not around and they will tell you that, that there's a great many things that need to be done. And he's working with staff, with finance, with me to get these things done. Now, we can invest wisely moving forward or we can just run and put out fires. I am of the mind that I don't want to put out fires. I want to invest, I want to plan and use capital improvement as a tool to make things happen long-term. It's cheaper, it's longer lasting and the citizens will be able to see what you're doing with that money.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, may I? And that's a good story you just told me, I totally get it. I mean, I read the whole thing that you just said. And I hope that some of the citizens and the staff read the same things I read. Again, I just think that you can do this along with the staff that you have here. We got some excellent staff here and you're talking about long-term. Okay, you've been here, what, three, four months, somewhere in there?
Three months.
Again, okay, I'm not saying that we cannot do it, I'm saying not at this time. And I think that you and your directors should get this done, not to hire somebody else to come in here and get it done. That's where you match. That, that, that's where you master at, that, that's your master plan. And I believe that you could do it without, uh, 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 another consultant coming in here and doing that. That's what I believe. That's how much faith and confidence I have in you and the staff here. Okay?
One, one of the things that I, I saw when I came here is that you already have staff doing, you have staff doing double jobs in some instances. Staff can only do so much. This is a one-time situation, this is a professional consultant that helps get, puts cities on the right track. Some of the things we, we found are going to save you millions of dollars. Just one thing we saw are going to save millions of dollars with the amount of money you have in the bank and the little interest rate you were getting on it. Our recommendation, just add one recommendation, going to save you a million of dollars. This guy, this is talking about thirty-nine thousand dollars to help you look at all these items. These items, uh, it's important when you do things. You know, if you, that's, that doesn't make sense in trying to do something after the horse has gotten out of the barn. I've only been here three months, and then that's three months, you talk to the staff, anybody else, we've accomplished a great deal. But we should have been able to accomplish a lot more if we had the, uh, level of additional expertise that we need. And he is helping train and working with our, our finance people so that, once he's gone, this is a consultant, he's not an employee. You're looking at it as if you're paying him as an employee, he's not, he's a consultant. And his job is to get us to where we want to be with economic development. Some of the citizens talked about not having jobs, um, not having other things that we can get. Well, that's a long and arduous process that has to be worked out over time, not just with the city, with the coordination with the county and other agencies, uh, throughout the state to make certain things happen. When you see a city of, uh, getting people coming in with a, a new job, that's not by accident. And that's a coordinated effort that involve that city, that involve that county, and sometimes even the state. That's the types of things that this guy helps people do. Uh, he's a bigger expert than I am in, in most of these things, this is all he does. And I'm a city manager, you know, I, I can't do the attorney's job, I need the attorney to do that. This guy is a professional consultant for economic development and other issues that I read off to you and gave to you in, in advance of the meeting. So whether you want to do that or not, I, I certainly understand, and, and that's fine, but you're going to cripple the city because I, I can't do everything, and staff can't do everything. We got staff people, you got HR doing two jobs, you got a bunch of people doing multiple jobs, that doesn't work long-term. This is a long-term solution for a problem that we can make go away over time, if you support me on it. If you don't, we're going to have problems, we're going to continue to have problems that we could have fixed tonight.
Okay, a, a, again, I, I don't think you quite understand what I'm, what I'm saying. I, I'm saying that you and the staff we have here, you, you just said it, they're, they're great, and they're doing multiple jobs, and they were doing that before you got here.
Absolutely.
Okay? And I believe that you and the staff that you have can get this done. I don't think that we need a expert out of, uh, you say he was from Germany, Hawaii?
Chicago.
Chicago. I don't think we need that person to come in here and do that, I think you and the staff that you have can get it done. However, if you don't think you could do it?
I don't think I can do this with just the staff we have here, I think we need some expert advice to solve some of these long-term problems. You, you're not talking about a fortune, you're talking thirty-nine thousand dollars to work on problems that this town has had for many, many years, problems that your citizens are rightly complaining about.
Mr. Mayor, may I? May I? Uh, we use consultants and engineering, engineering consultants on, on things all the time. The, the, the reason being that you don't always need an expert on everything all the time. So we don't need to hire a professional financial planner to serve on staff for the rest of, in perpetuity. But we also just, we also just made a point of going out of our way to, quite frankly, you know, shop on the top shelf and hire a man with a tremendous amount of experience. He's only been here three months, I feel like he's doing a great job forging relationships with the county and various directors and stuff like that. I just find it hard not to get behind what he's trying to get done here, um, having someone come in who's a specialist. I, you know, I think he is the, the definition of an expert generalist, right? You know, so this is, this is looking at the finances, this is getting the accolades, getting the, the, uh, certifications, all these sort of things that we have been lacking for a long time, planning ahead, to me, it seems like a no-brainer. And also, I'm just curious, uh, Councilman Jernigan, you were saying a moment ago that you don't mind it happening, just not right now. What does that mean?
Uh, a, again, uh, thank you for paying attention, close attention to what you're, what I'm saying, uh, you, you're very good at that. Uh, I, I'm not seeing, uh, and, and today, we, we don't need it today. Uh, maybe, uh, six months, eight months down the road, once he gets his feet wet, uh, as to how this city works. This is Lake City, this is not, um, Jacksonville or Gainesville, this is a little town called Lake City. And somehow or another, everything gets done that needs to be done, somehow or another it gets done. And, and, and don't get me wrong, I, I'm behind, uh, Mr. Rosenthal on everything he's got going on. It's just, at this point, with this guy coming in as a consultant, and I saw, did you see some of the things that he said that he, he's an expert in? And, uh, I was just trying to figure out what the, who, who, you know, what, what is it?
Councilman Jernigan, he came in, uh, during the budget workshops last week and gave a trip.
Yeah, and that was some of the, I, I've never seen a, uh, uh, a presentation like that, I was trying, what is he talking about? Of course, I was saying, I just, I, I didn't feel well or whatever, uh, I, I'm stressing, I, I'm trying to figure out, what is he talking about? I had no idea.
Well, that's kind of the point. He's a specialist, any of us don't have, have any idea.
Yeah, yeah, that, that is exactly right.
And my thought would be, if I may offer a metaphor, um, if you're investigating a crime, uh, you don't, uh, you don't, uh, arrest the, the subject and then investigate the crime six months later. You, you, you know, but to me, this guy feels like a magnifying glass. And, and, uh, Mr. Rosenthal here is Sherlock, and he's looking around.
Yeah.
So I feel like this is a tool he needs, and that's why I, uh, propose we approve it, that's all I have to say about that.
I'm there if you may, um, and the timing, I, I really agree that it's really not great timing for this. First of all, we just taxed the people, and then we're going to turn around and say, we got millions of dollars that we can handle. I don't agree with that, and that's exactly what's happening here. Again, and, and also, another thing that I, I, I'm missing here, have we tried? With our people, our local, our people who we have, you're saying it won't happen, but have we tried? And we spoke some today on, on our local banks. Not that we said, nothing was said anything negative in our conversation, but talking about our local bank and pulling out so much money is because it's not working. And I know we, we, you have to make your money make money, you have to work your money. But here again, the timing is not, the timing is not that working. And to place, I, I have to keep my train of thought, I can't hear, hear talking. But we have to try to see if we can work it. And he, and what I, what Mr. Jernigan is saying, he's commending you on what you know, your knowledge, and your knowledge along with finance, and have we tried to work this without this person coming in? It doesn't always take an expert, first of all.
If I may, uh, Councilman Young, uh, I've been doing this for a little over thirty years. When I came in, I was, when I saw the city, I was excited because of the possibilities that the city has. Uh, all the things that, that we can do for economic development, all the things the citizens are asking for, uh, the better management, uh, you know, where are our streets down on a timely basis, this organizes all that. Now, we can do things two ways, we can be straightforward and, and, and do things in an organized fashion that everybody can understand, or we can be haphazard, uh, and we're constantly running, trying to catch up. We are spending money in a deficit right now, nobody in their right mind can continue to do that and, and expect a good ending. Right now, we're deficit spending, and we, we talked about how bad deficit spending is over time because it sneaks up on you like somebody drinking, uh, you, you drink a water, before you know it, you're up and you're staggering. That's how it's going to hit the city if we don't do something about it. These little gestures, this thirty-nine thousand dollars can help me set something up so that not only we, we not, uh, stagger into oblivion, but that we actually do things to improve the city over time financially and economically. It's, it's an investment in ourselves.
Absolutely, uh, we are made, yeah, okay. Uh, and, and you're absolutely right, o, over time, uh, uh, Mr. Rosenthal. And it, and again, that's one reason why, uh, I, I chose you for that position, uh, to help us grow, and, uh,
But then you're fighting on the growth, you're actually fighting me tonight on the growth, Councilman.
No, that, that, that's not fighting you, that's just telling you that, uh, at this time here, I don't, uh, support it. However, maybe, uh, uh, once you get here and we see what's going on, what, what guarantee? When we pay this guy, uh, thirty-nine thousand, if I'm not mistaken, I'm looking at it here now, thirty-nine thousand, what guarantee do you have that we, as the citizens, as, as, as councils, uh, here in Lake City, that we are going to grow and move forward? You, you, you guarantee us that, am I correct?
I guarantee if you do the right things financially, if you don't deficit spend, if you pay attention to economic opportunities and, and work with me and work with the county, I guarantee you we'll move forward. I guarantee that the citizens will understand what we're doing and why we're doing it. And that's really all they're asking you, that's, why are we doing what we're doing? And when you have something organized and, and set up in a way that is easy to understand, it benefits everybody, not just the, you and the citizens, but it benefits everybody. If you don't, uh, look at the deficit spending, you don't put a stop to the deficit spending, nobody's going to be able to help the city, and I guarantee that.
Yes, well, okay, we're talking about two different things, the deficit, I, I totally get that, you're absolutely correct on that. Uh, and it, just like you just, and you're not, you say you're not a specialist and, and I'm not, and you could see that we are behind in the deficit, I totally agree with that. So I could see that, so, so we, we can get stuff like that done through, through you.
But, but that's more than, you have to do more, and, you know, that, I, I really think that's some of the problem. You know, we, we, we're sitting here, we're thinking that we can do one thing. You know, one of the things that the staff jokes, I, they have some, you know, kind of funny name, they, they, they call them like a, a half, half-stone crack because I'm running around doing all these things, right? But the reason I'm running around like that is because you can't do one thing at a time. There's all these things that make up a city are interrelated. So there, there's a lot of things that you have to do to make things work properly.
Yes, sir.
And what I'm asking you for tonight is to give me the ability to help the city. Give me the ability, help me help you. Give me the ability to bring in an expert that I've worked with before, uh, many, many years in different towns, that I know can make, help me make this work. And whether or not you want to do that, it's going to really show me whether or not you really are serious about what you're telling me to do. I came here because I'm excited about the things that I, I feel that I can do for the city, uh, to solve some of these issues. I've spent a lifetime solving issues for other people, I want to solve some issues for this city.
I have, I have a question if I may, um, to, to bring in someone without, does this, should this go through, um, procurement process? Is this legal that you just bring someone in? It's just a question, maybe that's for the attorney.
I don't think the attorney will let me do anything that was illegal.
Attorney, what you answer?
Uh, y, yes, Councilwoman Young, so in our procurement policies, there is an exception to, uh, the competitive procurement, that, that what is generally a competitive procurement requirement. Uh, the, the exception is referenced interchangeably as single souls, single source or sole source. And, uh, among the definitions of things that constitute, uh, the criteria for what can be a single source or a sole source, and I'm going to, I think I saw this car out there, do you have the manual handy? Because I, I think I'm going to mangle this, but, uh, it is, uh, for purposes of, uh, is it consistency and, uh, what was the other, uh, part of that definition that we looked at? I think it's on page fourteen of the, I, I remember the page number fourteen or fifteen of the policy manual. Oh, better, thank you. So for purposes of standardization warranty or other factors, even though competitive sources may be available. And, uh, in this case, the city manager prepared a memo, uh, that, uh, said for purposes of standardization based upon what, uh, Mr. Narducci had already done for the city, uh, under his, uh, prior initial contract to provide, uh, standardization of the information the city was receiving. And then in addition to that, to contend, uh, for purposes of continuity so that we could capitalize on the money the city has already spent on this particular consultant by continuing his services and providing continuity through this new contract, uh, was a, um, another factor under this definition of what was a single or sole source, uh, to allow the city to, uh, to circumvent the competitive procurement process using this exception.
And the, the initial is, is what he presented at the last meeting, is that the issue that you're?
That, there was an initial contract with, uh, NJN Consulting or Mr. Narducci that the council approved, I think back in, uh, late May, early June. And his presentation and services to this point have been under that contract, uh, which was, uh, just, just a small, I think, five-thousand-dollar contract. And, uh, and then this one is to go forward from there, continuing those services in a more comprehensive and, and broader manner is how I understand the scope of services, uh, that he's proposed under this contract before you tonight.
Yes, and if, if I may, when I initially got it, I was concerned about the big items, that, whether your pensions were okay, whether your, uh, whether the funding balances were okay, whether or not we were spending deficit. So, um, I found out the pensions are all in great shape, um, and through the assistance from Mr. Narducci, that we were spending, um, we're spending and spending deficit, but that we were still recoverable if we act now. When you consider a seventy-five-million-dollar budget, thirty-nine thousand dollars is not a great deal of money, but it's going to make a great deal of difference if we do it right now. Timing is everything.
May I, may I?
Okay.
Uh, a, a, again, um, uh, I, I just look at it as, uh, you, you, you know, he's, so, so he's going to be housed here? Or he's going to be in Chicago, where is it going to be?
No, he, he's a consultant, so he's not going to be, he'll be back and forth if we need it, like he came when we needed him for the, for your budget meeting. But he'll be, he's, he's on the phone, he's, he's here sometime, it's whatever we need to make things work.
Okay, but I, I, I read here, he, he, he's only going to do ten hours a week at seventy-five dollars an hour, not to see thirty-nine thousand dollars for, for the calendar year, am I correct?
That's the maximum amount, it, it may be less than that, you know what happens as we go along.
I wish you'd said that then, because, uh, uh, when, when I saw thirty-nine thousand, ten hours a week, I, I, I don't know about you, but, uh, I, I don't think there's too many staff members that you have here, in my opinion, that makes, that worked forty hours a week and don't make thirty-nine thousand. And I know they're not experts and specialists and all this kind of names that you call, uh, you, you, you know, you could talk over my head and, and, and say a whole bunch of things, but I just don't think at this time with this guy coming in, uh, uh, that, that is a good fit. I got a question for you, if I may. With this guy, you say he's a consultant, he's a specialist, he's got all these fancy names that Mr. Carter said, right? Is he going to be telling the staff members what to do, or he?
Absolutely not, you know, he, he's worked with the finance department, you, you can, uh, uh, she could speak to how he's dealt with her in, in the past. He's really, the staff will be better, at least the finance will definitely be a lot better after, after she's dealt and, and, and worked with him because he's going to show her things that we can use after he's gone.
He's, he's going to show her things that we, we could use after he's gone.
Yeah.
Okay, oh, okay, uh.
I mean, do you understand what I mean by, do I need to elaborate a little bit more on that?
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm not as educated as you are, uh, but I do understand. Okay, so, uh, a, a, again, I just think that you could do it, and we don't need somebody else coming in here to tell us of the staff here what can and cannot be done. However, I'm going to support you on this, but just remember I told you that, okay?
I appreciate it.
And, yeah, they won't be telling, he won't be telling these staff what to do, directing them, and that's going to be your job.
Absolutely not.
Okay, and, and, and another thing is that, um, you, you, you're guaranteeing me that, uh, in a year or two, because, you know, I won't be, I probably won't be sitting in this seat in a year or two according to some other people, you know? So, 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 so I may not be sitting here, uh, nobody knows what the future holds. Again, uh, I, I would like to, uh, see the city of Lake City grow, and so I'm going to support you.
I appreciate it.
On this matter, okay?
I appreciate it.
Remember this conversation.
I will.
Mr. Sykes, call the room.
Mr. Carter?
Yeah.
Mr. Hill?
Yeah.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mayor Witt?
Yes. Okay, item fourteen, city council resolution twenty twenty-four dash one zero four. Pardon me, do you read that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. Council members, you have before you resolution number twenty twenty-four dash one zero four. A resolution of the city of Lake City, Florida, approving that certain legal services agreement with Mark's grave for legal services related to proceedings arising from that certain legal action brought by Nicholas J. Albrecht against the city of Lake City identified by Columbia County Case Number twenty-four dash twelve sixteen dash S C. Making certain findings of fact and support thereof, recognizing the authority of the mayor to execute and bind the city to set agreement, directing the mayor to execute and bind the city to set agreement, repealing all prior resolutions in conflict and providing an effective date. in conflict and providing an effective date. Should the council wish to adopt this resolution, an appropriate motion would be to adopt Resolution twenty-two-four dash one oh four as read by title only.
Mr. Nicholas. I like Mr. Nicholas. He go hard in the paint. Why? He kinda remind me of me. He stick to his guns and he get it done. Now he's got y'all behind up on some court cases that y'all city manager, a city attorney can't handle. Way to go, Mr. Nicholas. I'm gonna call and congratulate him. So now y'all gotta hire an attorney for him. And this is a different guy. I'm talking about no real paper, no real financials behind him, but he a paper pusher, right? So imagine if somebody throw some money behind some stuff, imagine how much trouble y'all would be in and this firm can't handle. If Mr. Nichols just made y'all hire an attorney, what do you think that I have the ability to do to this city? What do you think I have the ability to do to you, Ms. Young? I recall y'all, for fun. For fun, I would recall two of these council members who ain't gonna be here, for fun. And Mayor, just to be honest, if you stayed and if you wouldn't have stepped aside, I was gonna recall you two. So what has happened here, you want, tell me why this council has elected this city attorney firm who said they had all these multiple attorneys, and now all of a sudden, every time an issue pops up, they don't have the legal expectations or the legal experience to deal with it? We keep hiring attorneys, we keep hiring attorneys. We hired an attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Carter, Cannon said he could do, and this attorney firm said they can do the eminent domain. Come to find out they couldn't. Now we hired an attorney for that. Here come Mr. Nichols. Now we're gonna hire an attorney for that. Now, and we hired a consultant, which is his friend, which is fine by me. I mean, I'm gonna bring my buddies along too. I guess he got a track record together. When does it stop? But you raised our taxes. You raised our military. No, you do the work. Make him do the work. Save us some money. Find somebody in your firm to do the work. Do not sell this out. Stop spending our money, and we got an attorney. If our attorney cannot do it, then we need to find an attorney firm that can represent us across the board unless it's something that's high-level that no firm can't understand or do that's a specialty, such as maybe eminent domain, which they claim they knew how to do in the beginning, and they lied to us, and you still have them here after lying to us. On several occasions, we've caught them in lines. One part of the firm was in conflict and was drunk. And y'all left the other half of the firm here. And you allow you. And you a CPA too, man. As a matter of fact, that's a lack of fiduciary responsibility on your behalf. I forgot you're CPA. Ain't you a CPA? You a certified CPA. Slap of fiduciary responsibility.
All right, Mr. Bowden.
Mr. Mayor, I want to speak to this issue on the consent agenda. It says here that around from certain legal action brought by Mr. Nichols. What are those actions? Is that a matter of record that's subject to check? What does this lawsuit entail? It's suing because of, I heard it's suing because of, what are we paying? What are we paying the?
I have an actual sentence that, they, every, you know, each law case, I do a lot of variety. I don't do everything.
No, no, I'm talking about a lawyer. I'm saying, what does this case entail?
Well, that's what we'll probably have a shade meeting on and discuss for months and months.
Mr. Mayor?
I want to comment on pending litigation up here.
I was gonna say.
Yes, and it's a certain, can you not say what these certain legal actions are?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I can give kind of a one-sentence overview to give it some context. As was mentioned, it probably would not be appropriate for me or for council to comment beyond that on pending litigation. But the case arises from allegations of the improper issuance of a traffic ticket in a school zone by the Lake City Police Department. And it has been filed as a small claims case, and so it would involve police procedures, among other things, although it is a small claims case.
Pretty simple. I want to ask the foreman. Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion of City Council Resolution twenty-one four dash one oh four?
Move to approve twenty-two-four dash one oh four.
Second.
The motion of second, and discussion back down.
Yes, discussion. And it's very necessary that this was pulled off the consent agenda. My question was, and I really didn't get any answers until just a few, couple of hours ago, that a person can get us a traffic ticket and sue us because it was staged, if I can use that, that word. It was staged. And we have to go out and hire an attorney for a simple traffic ticket. No, I don't know how much we're gonna have to pay out for this, for a simple traffic ticket. So my question was, we have an attorney, but our attorney can't represent. The city attorney can't represent us. I don't like the sound of that. It's not, it's not enough for Florida League of Cities. So I found out that Florida League of Cities is the one who called in another attorney. I'm told that the H.R., Ms. Miller, can help us out with this, because I have questions. How did we get here as to where we have to hire an attorney?
We were served papers, I think it was last week, they were delivered, about this case. And naturally, the first thing I did was to put it to our attorney in the Florida League of Cities. Well, our deductible to the Florida League of Cities is ten thousand dollars. So it's, we can pay them, but the ticket alone was just under four hundred dollars. And then, so they're asking for the ticket price and then legal fees. So our attorney said they can't handle it, and then Florida League of Cities recommended this other attorney to handle the case.
We have a, hey, we have a problem. Something as simple as a civil infraction. And we have to go hire an attorney, one of us can represent. You hear what I'm saying? It's just that simple. And we gotta hire an attorney? Could it pay thousands of dollars to defend us on a civil infraction? And I'm sure we have the evidence.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Right? We have the evidence.
The police department should have that if there's cameras.
Absolutely. Law enforcement has the evidence. So the defendant, all he has is what? Does he have evidence?
He has a ticket.
He has a ticket. But who wrote the ticket? We wrote the ticket. I'm lost. And we don't have, we have to hire an attorney to represent us in this? It makes no sense. You can read a few laws and go in there and represent the city. I have a problem with it.
Unfortunately, as the manager, I can't.
I understand that it's not, it's not, believe me, it has nothing to do with you. But I'm gonna say what I said to the city manager today. If we get into practice of doing this, you can look out. And Mr. Warren said it earlier. It's exactly what I said. If a man can come and sue us with a, if it look like this, with a ticket, a civil infraction, y'all can look out, it's coming. We just digging the whole process.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, if for nothing else but for the council's advocacy and the public's, I'm sure people would like to know why or the logic behind why Mr. Martin or Gold Walker wouldn't represent us in this case, and why we would hire Mr. Gray, I believe.
Would that be?
Mark's Gray.
Mark's Gray, yeah, is the name of the firm.
Would that be a question best directed to the city manager or to the attorney?
I can take that unless Mr. Rosenthal wants to take it.
I do not.
The rationale for this is very simple. In terms of actually responding with a full legal response is to send the message that repetitively, we will not stand for having people take tickets and suing us on the basis and for reimbursements of the tickets. The idea is that if we do this one time and send the message that we are not going to stand for being sued over things like this, that it will only be the one time and we won't have to do this continuously. As to our particular firm, although he is only sued for the face value of the ticket plus its legal fees, there are elements of police practices involved in this. And our firm does not handle police practices. We're not a criminal defense firm. It's not an area we specialize in. There are certainly areas that could be touched on through the course of this litigation, although it's been filed as a small claims case. And for that reason, we do not feel that we are best suited to represent the city in this area. Mark's Gray has a history of representing the city in its insurance claims litigation that are over and above the ten thousand, and that was the basis for, and I did not even realize that the League of Cities had recommended them. Frankly, I reached out to them independently, I believe, to see if they would be willing to take this on because of their past history of representing the city and because they do represent us in cases that involve police practices and civil rights. And so that was the basis of my recommendation for them. So I think that answers the two questions, just why in general, and then why that particular firm. Thank you.
But I hear a problem, and Mr. Rosenthal told me that, that was part of why this was happening this way. So the city will pay thousands of dollars to say, I'm gonna show you. You've been bothering us for a long time now. You've been causing problems for a long time now. We gonna show you. We gonna pay thousands of dollars.
I don't think.
Or show and tell, that's what you just said.
Mr. Mayor, to clarify my remarks, I don't think, I can tell you what I was not intending to communicate, that we were gonna show him this particular litigation particularly. But that in general, for anyone out there, that this is not the way you can test a ticket. There are mechanisms by which you can test a ticket, and this gentleman has not availed himself in particular, and we would want to send the message that for others, that that would be the appropriate way to challenge a ticket.
I'm giving twenty thousand dollars to keep filing lawsuits against the city.
Would be through a traffic infraction or traffic.
All right. All right. I'm sorry, sir, I was talking to Mr. Nichols. I'm allowing some money to keep filing lawsuits.
Mr. Mayor, may I comment as well?
Sure.
Okay, and I understand what Mr. Carter was saying and what you're saying. Don't get me wrong, however, I just need to know a list of things that you do represent. Because I don't, I don't get it how you have a city attorney and there's just certain things that you or your firm cannot represent. And we pay you very, very good money to look into these different situations and problems. And all you do is look into them, you give them to somebody else, and then we pay that person, then we got to pay you for looking into it. So it's more to it than just getting a firm out there. We have to pay you to look for the firm, the other firm. And that firm gets paid and you get paid. So I just need to know a list of things that you do represent, especially the city council and the citizens here in Lake City. If you can get me a copy of all of that at your earliest convenience, I know it's gonna take you a little bit of time to do that as well, and we gotta pay for that too, I guess. Because we, I just don't know what you do. I mean, I just, and trust me, I look at every meeting that you attend, I listen to the things that you say, and you're very good at what you do. However, I just wanna know what you do represent. Everything that comes your way, you can't do it, but you got the means to do it. But we got to pay you to look into it, then we got to pay the other person for taking the case. And that's what bothers me. If you could just be our city attorney, deal with the situations and circumstances, I think we'll be better off. That's just me. That's just my opinion.
We'll be happy to get to that list, and assuming this passes tonight, I think one of Ms. Erdley, who's the attorney at Mark's Gray, one of her first requests is gonna be to do a shade meeting with the council to discuss the matter and how the council wishes to move forward.
You do, man. Again, I like what you do and how you do it, okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Carter?
Yay.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
No.
Mayor Witt?
Yes. Next, we're, the open and closed judicial hearings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, tonight you have before you an item that must be voted on or considered to be voted on by the city council in a quasi-judicial manner. That item is ordinance number twenty-two-four dash two-two-seven-six, which is an ordinance considering an application for voluntary annexation submitted by Assistant Davis. As you know, the purpose of the procedure that we follow in quasi-judicial hearings is to make sure that everybody gets a fair hearing. We will hear from the city and from the applicant and from any members of the public that wish to comment on the matter. While the council welcomes comments from all persons with an interest in the proceeding, for our law requires that the council's decision in quasi-judicial actions be supported by competent substantial evidence presented to the city council during the hearing on the application. Confident substantial evidence is evidence that a reasonable mind would accept as adequate to support a conclusion. There must be a factual basis in the record to support opinion testimony from both expert and non-expert witnesses. People presenting testimony must support their testimony by relying on factual information provided by city staff and/or the applicant, or on other factual information included in the city staff report. At this time, I do need to inquire of each council member individually if they've received any exhortations on this particular matter, and if so, to please disclose them. Councilwoman Young? No. Councilman Carter?
No.
Councilman Jernigan?
No.
Councilman Hill?
No.
And Mayor Witt?
No.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone here that's going to testify on this matter? Okay, Mr. Bowden, if you could stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I promise to tell the truth, I promise to.
Thank you. Councilmembers, you have before you proposed ordinance twenty-two-four dash two-two-seven-six, which states an ordinance of the City of Lake City, Florida pursuant to petition number ANX twenty-four oh one relating to voluntary annexation, making findings, annexing certain real property located in Columbia County, Florida, which is reasonably compact and contiguous to the boundaries of the City of Lake City, Florida, and to the boundaries of the City, and to the boundaries of the City of Lake City, Florida, providing severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict, and providing an effective date. At this time, Mr. Manager, do you wish to move the application and city staff report into evidence in support of the application?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the applicant? Are you in public comment or to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Oh.
Okay, do we have an agency forum on file for Mr. Warren to speak as the applicant's agent? Is he in the file?
I'm on the file.
Okay, we would have to have that for you to speak on behalf, but you certainly could speak during public comment.
So you do not do your job?
Do you wish to speak during public comment?
Yeah, I'm speaking during public comment, but I did it on purpose.
Okay. At this time, we would move to public comment, Mr. Bowden.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I want to speak in favor of this and make the point that one of the ways that the city is gonna be able to grow and reduce taxes is through inflation. You gotta grow this city. I learned from statistics, the data shows that the county's growing, but the city is declining. We losing population. So the higher our taxes, the go down, and you gotta increase it. So I'm having about Miss Davis, her granddaughter, she's in the city, for numbers. If you ask her about Granny, she said, I know Uncle Granny. She called Uncle Granny because she her mother. Her mother and I became brothers way back when I was little. When I was in the streets and the roads and didn't know where I was going, she took me in like a brother. Ever since then, I became her uncle and she became my sister. So I'm excited for her. I'm looking forward to this restaurant, she don't call it Mama Ten X. That's her grandma. They don't be right there from Target's. It's gonna be right up there from Target's. It gonna be some good food. I know Mama can cook, Grandma can cook. She's frail. It's out of the west side, that's where they out of, west side or whatever. So I hope you support this. It's the right thing to do. I think when a business wanna come into the city, unless there's some real reason that they shouldn't come in, we're gonna be welcoming in. When she first said she wasn't gonna do it, I was upset. She said, I'm not sure I wanna pay them no tax. I said, yeah, I want to. Anybody wanna come in, come on in. I mean, unless I'm gonna have to pay. So I'm all about annexation. I'm all about that. And I agree with the city manager that if he get his person in, that somebody can do that kind of stuff. You know, it's more than just managing the city. You got to have somebody to help. And I know this off the top of my head, but I like the way he presented himself in the last thing because it's written about getting some help. You know, can you imagine what's gonna happen, Mr. Mayor, in November? In November, and I'm saying on this, the two senior members on this city council were all in there for two years. Keep that in mind. The senior members of the city council were all in there for two years. So we don't leave the city manager really nobody there.
Thank you, Mr. Bowden. Mr. Warren? If you could, raise your right hand to take another. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, all truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
So help me who?
So help you God.
So help me me.
Will you tell the truth?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
You ready?
I'm ready.
So this is something that I'm very excited about as an entrepreneur. One of the reasons I wanna get up here is Mr. Bowden talked about Cecilia Mama taking him in when he was in the streets. Well, let me tell you about Mama Jeanette. For most people who don't know Mama Jeanette. So I'm a former street dude, right? We hustled, we came up, we did everything. Mama Jeanette was a safe haven. It was a place where she lived that you can go and you can chill in her yard, you can hang out, you can do your thing, you can be a part of your culture, you can be in. It was no judgment and it was love and it was protection. And I'm disappointed that this house is not packed with people in here just given the fact that Mama Jeanette's name is being mentioned as much as people were at her house on the west. And I'm from the east side and we packed it over there. She's a legend. She's just one of the, she's a star of the earth to me. She done protected me many times, done ate from her table many times, done told the police many times, you're not gonna miss with these boys. That was real love. We ain't even got that in our community anymore, Mama Jeanette. So to have a restaurant open in her name, I think that is, she should've got a key to the city. That's what y'all need to do, an honorary key to her. That's what she need, if anybody was up there had any decency. But to annex any piece of property to the city, it's a no brainer. It's a no brainer. It's a part of why our tax properties shouldn't have been raised in the beginning. You shouldn't have been doing this. I applaud Cecilia for doing this and I applaud her for naming after her grandma. But I'm disappointed in you all for not been finding this avenue. But you know why y'all hadn't been finding this avenue? Because you don't care and for too long, we've elected our buddies and people who say that they're our friends instead of electing people who have the general knowledge to understand the basic things of parliamentary duties. And when you hire a city manager, you hire him to take on his recommendations, meaning you hire him to trust him, to give you information for you to vote on, to give him the tools that he need. If a man need a $200,000 bucket truck to do his job, you give him one. If a man needs a consultant, you give him one. It doesn't matter because he's from Chicago, doesn't matter because it's his friend. If the dude has it, he has it. And that's what we keep going wrong. So I support it. I don't think it's gonna get any more feedback. Just do what you do. Y'all reckon, y'all reckon?
Is there any more public comment? Seeing none, is there anything that city manager wishes to say to wrap it up?
No.
Okay, thank you. At this time, it'd be appropriate for the council to ask any questions of the city manager or Mr. Brown here, who has some of the technical information on this. If there are no questions, then the council can proceed to approve the criteria upon which this would be based is the application can be adopted if the property proposed to be annexed is contiguous to the current municipal boundary, is reasonably compact and the application bears the signatures of all property owners and property to be annexed and otherwise complies with state laws that does not confer special privileges on any person. The appropriate motion, should you wish to adopt this, would be to adopt ordinance number 2024-2276, as read by title on that. Move it.
We'll adopt 2024-2276.
Second.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yeah.
Mayor Witt?
Yes.
Okay, next is the cheer champion signing request. Maybe I'll-
Okay, this group came before us, a group of ladies. They came before us, but they was a little shorthanded on their documents. They have since provided those documents to our office and it's not on the agenda because it was an oversight, but they did get it to us in time. So they did what they were asked to do. Now, I think one of them is here. I think we, I don't have any questions. We heard from them. We know what their desires for the young girls in this community, this cheer group. They've told us who they are, how they came about, that they are under the umbrella of Richardson Community Center and the director would have been here had he known they were gonna be on the agenda today. I have spoken with him today to make sure that everything is still good with this and he did say yes. And they're excited for them funds, so we're asking tonight if we can go ahead and approve this, these funds, $5,075, which this group is asking.
Mr. Mayor, it amazes me how some things make it on the agenda with no backup material and all of a sudden, all these phone calls get made to individuals. And last time we hear Ms. Young made the comment, if y'all remember that, she hadn't had any action with those particular individuals. Well, come to find out, those individuals, when they didn't get that money that night, right, I typically get the phone calls, right? So here's the problem that I have. It's not a problem about not giving them the money, it's about being dishonest, right? So you had contact with the individual because you told them how much they need to apply for. The problem that you didn't do, you didn't properly support them. Because man, if you look at the information, and if y'all gonna do the right thing, because there's nothing in this city for girls other than to get pregnant, to get raped or become human trafficking, right? That is not enough money to give them what they need. Y'all were setting them up to fail. They have turned in a proposal for $11,000, some change to accurately run that program. And if y'all are gonna fund it, if y'all are gonna fund it, the right thing to do, Mr. Carter, Ms. Young, Mr. Jernigan, Ms. Hill and Mayor Witt, is to fund it to the maximum dollar amount that it actually takes to run it successfully. I'm telling you, I know the people that are behind the program, the $5,000 is gonna fall $6,000 short. They need $11,000. So I am requesting, since she has the whatever to come up here and ask them and push them for $5,000, push them for the amount of money they really need. Why shortchange them? Give them the money that they need so these young girls can chill, have the right uniforms on and have the right shoes on and they can be nice looking young ladies and get the things they need. And most of these young girls come from different backgrounds that would never have this opportunity before. Y'all done raised our taxes. So what would it hurt to give some little girls that have nothing to do an extra $5,000, $6,000 so they can do it right? Be honest, they need, what was the, the last proposal came in, what was, $11,000? They really need $11,000. Why y'all dumbing down how much they really need? Mayor, do you have a problem supporting $11,000? If that's what the girls truly need?
They truly need?
Do y'all truly need $11,000? Be honest. They do. She, this is her lady. They truly need $11,000. They done spoken to me. I ain't gonna lie to y'all. Give them what they truly need to be successful. Go up there, baby, tell them what y'all truly need. Don't lie.
Mayor, I spoke with the ladies. I asked them what they need. They asked for $5,075. The podium is open and if they, I mean, I'm asking for $5,075 tonight. If the podium is open, if they need more, then they come back and ask. But they never told me they need $11,000. So I'm making a motion that the-
Second.
It's all right, it's all right.
I'll just say this, I feel like a broken record on this particular subject. I don't think this is an unworthy cause, but we went through the effort of putting together a whole program for these things and every time this has come up at meetings, I've suggested that they apply for the Mayor Matching Grant Fund, which I think has a maximum amount per applicant, $10,000, I think is what we said at that. So in my opinion, and moving forward, if we're gonna have a program, if we're gonna do it, the whole point is accountability, the whole point is transparency. So my personal suggestion is that this, like anything else, whether it be our RCC Cheer Champions themselves applying for Safe Grant, whether it be the Richardson Community Center applying for Safe Grant to use that money to fund their program, I don't understand why we're just, we just made, I don't understand why we're now trying to certain man. But that's just, I just said to say.
Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I would like to say, piggyback off of Mr. Carter at this point, we have that application process and I think we should stick to that whenever, whoever wants to get funds from the city. That mayor's application grant there is what we need to stick to.
And I will say, it's our fault that they didn't go through the application process. It was not intact, it wasn't ready, so that's why they came by the way they did. So it's not their fault, it's our negligence.
Ms. Young?
Mayor, may I get some clarification on the motion? So is the motion to approve $5,075 in funding, I need an account number, I guess, from finance as the appropriate account number or reference on that for funding source. And then is it going to be made payable to Richardson Community Center Cheer Champions? Is that who is payable to?
They don't have a specific account for that.
Okay. Make the check, so the motion is to make the check payable to Richardson Community Center?
And make note in memo that this is for the RCC.
May I ask for some further clarification? Are we gonna get receipts or are we gonna get some sort of proof that the money was stamped the way? Like that? I think the motion is just like that.
Would you let that into the motion as well, Ms. Young?
Yes, they will.
Okay.
May I have a question?
Uh huh.
Is this reimbursable or is this to be paid upfront and then we collect receipts? How is this process going?
I think we're gonna pay, we're paying upfront, it's not, it's not, that's what we asked for.
Okay, thank you. And then-
Also, and I'm sorry.
I would just need an account, what account you want me to reference for the funding source?
It's gonna be A to private organizations. 882.
Okay.
At far as the amendments, it says we need to make the check payable to Richardson Community Center Cheer Champions on the invoice. Is that, we sticking with that or we changing it to Richardson Community Center?
No.
To the one that-
Ms. Young?
That conversation, I didn't hear.
Just for the record, you did say the one that's located on the invoice, right?
Ms. Young, did you wanna amend your motion for that or you're wanting to make the check payable to Richardson?
Can I ask her to come to the podium so we can get some clarification?
Mayor?
Yeah, I thought you had it clarified already. It's supposed to be the people in the chair? I'm sorry, I didn't.
Okay, so make it payable to, like, Richardson Community Center Cheer Champions? Okay, and that's gonna be okay with going through the account of Richardson Community Center? Okay.
Okay, so the motion is to approve $5,075 in funding from A to private organizations and then I'll get the account number in more detail from finance. And it's going to be made payable to Richardson Community Center Cheer Champions. And then there's a note also that they're also to turn in receipts after the fact.
Right.
Okay, so have Ms. Young? I'm sorry. Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Hey, Mr. Jernigan?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mayor Witt?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one comment. To be clear, like I said at the beginning of the thing I said before, the last thing we just, I don't believe that that's an unworthy cause. I don't want anyone to get the feeling that I'm against cheerleaders having uniforms or all that kind of stuff. I just think that at some point, we have to stop making a habit of just throwing money at everything in a very loosey-goosey sort of unmanaged way. So I would just like to see us continue to try to lean into systems, lean into frameworks that make it accessible and that make it fair.
I got a question. Administration, is the process set in place now so that it can be done the proper way?
Yes.
Okay, if we're not throwing money around, I really need that rephrase. We're not throwing money around and we would have gone through the proper process had it been in place. So it's in place now, so for future references, that's the way it will go, but we're not throwing money around.
I have a quick question as well, Mr. Mayor, for the finance director. Ms. Taylor, the mayor's matching grant workshop that we had a week or two ago here in this room, was that also streamed live like our meetings? Is that something you can go back and watch?
I believe so, I guess.
Okay, because I believe that that program went live a week or maybe a little more than a week ago. I was here at the workshop we had for folks who were interested in applying for it and that workshop apparently is on our YouTube channel and it's got a lot of really good information on how to go about, because it's a bit of a process, but it's all online and it's, I think, pretty streamlined. For the folks out there who are wanting to apply for this grant, it's now online and it's a process that I don't think is overly difficult, but also there's a video on our YouTube that explains how to do it, so.
Okay. I got something to say too. My name was Carter Hill, Jernigan, Young. Okay, of course, I was listening to the last meeting and I think that Mr. Carter was, you know, we wanted to have meetings that brings class to the, you know, to the council. And, you know, every time we get to this, around this budget time here, we hear a lot of complaints and grets about different situations, different people pay, and I just wanna talk about that, this problem a little bit. These complainings about your, about this or about that, I just want to identify those actions and I want you to help the process. And if you help the process, we all can gain in that, you know? And I had a long talk with Mr. Rosenthal and Ms. Sykes. There's no I team and I want everybody to take ownership of their own role and embrace collaboration and that's important to me. You know, you got a department, you run your department, don't worry about the next department. That department, all those people answers to the city manager and he's more than capable of handling any situation or circumstances that come up and then if he can't, I'm pretty sure that he'll get somebody that can. So don't worry about this department, that department. If you see something needs to be done, take it to the city manager. Nobody don't have to come to me. I don't have to, I learn a lot about-
I I learned a lot about this last meeting that we had, uh, that, that I wasn't present to. Learned a lot. So therefore, if you got a problem, go to the city manager. However, you run your own department, and let's get this city back on the right track. No matter how we look at it, we're gonna get it back on the right track. And I just want Mr. Rosenthal to know that I'm 100% behind what he's trying to accomplish. I just know that with the expertise that he has, he can get the job done. So don't ever think that you don't have my support. You and Dee Johnson and all your other department heads, every one of them has my support. No, no, they can't come talk to me about a problem or situation. But it don't, it don't take a rocket scientist to figure it out, what the, what we got going on good and what we got going on bad. So, uh, I mean, I'm really into making the city grow and making, uh, making it a better place for all of us, okay? So keep that in mind, all right?